I don't know. Oh.
We keep getting bigger and bigger, I hear you.
Somebody my age. I wonder if everyone can take their seats, please? We've got to go ahead and start in a second. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council work session to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
And I'm here, too. Thank you. Do we have any cards for public comment for the work session? No? No? Okay. All right. Going to move forward. Do we have a presentation, starting with our city manager, David Hales, with a preliminary draft of a five-year capital improvement plan? And Mr. Hales?
Thank you, Mayor. All the council should have received a binder that has a lot of room in it. And that's on purpose because this preliminary draft is a document that I want to just talk about for a few minutes, about what is it? What do we hope to do with that, with your time and effort in the months ahead? And why it's critical that ultimately our goal is to have the council adopt a five-year capital improvement plan at some point in the future. First off, though, I think it's important to keep in mind that whether we call it a capital improvement plan or a community investment plan, this is structured around a five-year period based on a number of various master plans, infrastructure master plans, as well as information contained in our comprehensive plan, goals, and other community expectations. Capital projects, when we use that term, ultimately will have a definition in here to make sure that we're all using the same definitions. Usually, a capital project is pretty large-scale in nature, could involve facilities, construction, major equipment purchases, and significant maintenance and repair. This particular document, as it stands right now, and I again want to stress, these numbers will be subject to change, but right now, this preliminary draft has approximately $337 million in projects. Only $60 million in projects have what we project is probably secured funding. That is, we think that either through fees, service charges, there's enough money to cover those. There's around $277 million in projects where funding is not secured, or it just doesn't exist at the present time, for one way or another. Many of these projects are mandated, such as our combined sewer overflow separation, continuation with Locust Colton, addressing the east side infiltration or INI problems is an ongoing critical concern. We have many unfunded capital projects that are very critical versus others that maybe are going to be identified as very important for the city now or in the future. As you go through and just look at the summary of these projects, you might get the impression that it's a daunting list, it's a formidable list, and how in the world are we going to achieve these? I will say this, that we're no different than probably the federal government, the state government, and most municipalities and counties throughout the nation. Rarely have I ever in my career seen any governmental entity that feels like they're totally up to date, you know, on maintaining all and keeping all their capital improvements in a very much up-to-date, you know, meeting current deadlines. Inevitably, there's always going to be some backlog. I think it might be helpful, though, to just mention a few reasons why our particular list might be a little greater than maybe some other cities of our size. I think part of that, and some of these may resonate with you, is we do have some, in past years, city funding very much was focused to new residential growth, as identified by the so-called Carson-Weiss report. Also, in the past, we have not had infrastructure master plans and a capital improvement program that at least would have the visibility to not only the council, the staff, and the public at large. I think unfortunately, many of the backlog of infrastructure has gone beyond the expiration of useful life, and consequently, much of our investment has gone into emergency repairs, where staff is estimated sometimes those can cost 40, 50% more than what it would cost if we were on a very proactive, ongoing capital replacement and repair schedule. Also, only in a few cases do we have dedicated revenue streams. And sometimes, we don't have any dedicated revenue streams for other facilities, which can complicate the budgeting process on a year-to-year basis. In many cases, we do have fees and service charges, but they maybe have only been updated sporadically, and in some cases, not enough to keep up with cost inflation. Also, and I think this is what I've heard from many of the staff, so much of their limited resources have been focused on deferred maintenance and operations and not really having the time to devote to capital planning, which is unfortunate. And one other thought I would throw out there is, I think there's also, because we have a lack of development impact fees that could be used to fund capital improvements as required and accommodate new growth. Because we really haven't had those kind of fees, oftentimes, some of that new growth falls back on the general user and the ratepayers. But for whatever reason, what we are trying to achieve is to have a CIP that ultimately, upon approval, will provide for a balanced strategy for not only what capital improvements will be funded, how they are going to be funded, what is the priority, and how have we established some of these competing demands for limited resources, both from what will satisfy current residents and businesses' needs, hopes and expectations against those of future residents and businesses that will come in the future. I do want to point something out very much at this point in time, and that is, as you look at these cost estimates, some of those are very, very high-level. As an example, we have a cost number of $50 million for a city operations center. Basically, this is a replacement of our public works yard, our fleet management area, on and on and on. There's also $50 million for a city hall. In neither case do we have, you know, anything but a ballpark guess. And I'm also realistic that we're not necessarily saying that those things have to be built today, or maybe even in five years. I think in the case of the operations center, which I would see as a higher priority, the goal of putting those in here is we have to move expeditiously and embark on a space study so that we can begin getting some good, reliable factual data on if we do make that investment for replacement or new facilities, what's going to be the future needs. And in the case of office space, how can we maximize even some of the space we have currently, between the government center, this facility, you know, and any others that might be? So please, in no way do I even think a city hall is going to take place until way into the future, but we do have some very serious office space deficiencies, and we're not being as efficient as we could because we're so spread out. So, but, but the first step is these office space needs, similar to what the library is doing, we need to do that for our administrative offices and for our public works, fleet, water, and parks maintenance offices as well. As we continue to go forward, I think it's also important to point out, is even though this is a five-year time horizon, probably a second version of this will be a kind of a 20-year projection, because that's where some of these big, major projects, we really need to ensure that at least we're looking out 20 years, and it may take five, 10, 15 years before we get to them, but I think it's critically important that we all see what those needs are and see more than likely, how can we begin to try to address some of that funding, you know, given existing revenue constraints, things of that nature. Going forward, I think it's also important to point out some things that are not in here. As an example, we still have master plans to complete. One example is the parks master plan. Even though that was last comprehensively updated in '97, we did do some minor updating in 2009, but that's really not sufficient to have a very much up-to-date, comprehensive update. Recently, I had a chance to look at normals updated, major updated parks master plan, and that's the kind of major, comprehensive update we still need, if for no other reason, to ensure that when we look to secure funding from grants and other sources, we can show that we do have up-to-date master plans. Also, the culinary water master plan is still needed to consolidate and establish some of the future needs of the overall state of the water system, even though there's individual reports that'll be of benefit. Furthermore, I think it's important to point out that as we begin to get into some of the updated sections of this report, we will provide to you weeks in advance individual project description and data sheets. We have many of those, but we wanted you first to look at the great disparity between what we can fund and what is unfunded, and especially in the different categories. Even where we have fees and service charges, like in stormwater and sanitary sewer, we have some very serious challenges. Stormwater has very little cash on hand. Sanitary sewer is in a little better position, but in both cases, we've undertaken some fee and service charge studies that hopefully will be part of that discussion going forward. How will those dedicated revenue streams begin to address some of those needs? Here in a minute, I do want to pass out a handout to talk about what's going forward, but in the early stages, in fact, probably in one of our next sessions, probably the first meeting in August, what we want to first talk a little bit about at a high level is what are some of the financing policy options? Pay-as-you-go, debt financing, a combination of both? And the reason that's important, and as some of you who were here when a debt policy was adopted, usually, just like any kind of pre-budget discussion, that's a critical element, because as we know, our current taxpayers, whether they're businesses or residents, are always asking why we can't lower taxes, why can't we reduce the tax burden? But on the other hand, we're in a situation where we have a total of about $106 million in existing outstanding debt. The bulk of that, $75 million, is in outstanding general obligation bonds. Much of that is associated with downtown improvements, the Coliseum, the BCPA, Pepsi Ice Center, parking garages, et cetera. We also have other Illinois environmental protection water loans and capital lease, which if it wasn't for our capital lease program, we wouldn't have some of the turnover and replacement of our equipment that has been very critical, and we've had an acute need in years past. On the other hand, we're also going to, in our next meeting, talk a little bit about, we could maintain the current debt service level as it stands today, and probably, you know, have the option to borrow 40 to 50 million. Now, that may sound like a very sizable amount to borrow, but when you start looking at the unfunded nature of streets, and we do have in the mayor's proposal for Streets 2.0 for the significant needs in sanitary sewer and stormwater, some fire stations, et cetera, you know, that money can go very quickly. But, once again, we feel that in the early stages, there needs to be that discussion on, from a policy standpoint, how do we want to finance capital improvements going forward? What is going to be a debt limit that the council wants to adopt, if nothing more, from a planning standpoint? And then, we can go through all these projects, try to come up with a balanced five-year plan, and then come back and see how that meshes with these policies on debt financing, as well as how we're financing many of the other projects. Another thing that we're still a little kind of deficient on is some of the prioritizing of unfunded capital needs between categories. Part of this is going to be a subject of considerable discussion with you as the council, because how do you begin to balance street resurfacing with underground infrastructure? Or sanitary sewer and stormwater with fire stations? You know, either renovation and upgrading. How do you balance those with other facilities, some of which, as we've seen in the last few years, the norm is more to replace things when it becomes a dire emergency, as opposed to replacing them, you know, as we get to the useful life? But anything, anyway, those will be some of the critical discussions going forward. Secondly, what's going to be the public's involvement? Good best practices in any kind of very comprehensive, meaningful, long-term capital improvement program is to engage business owners, residents, because ultimately, having those kind of conversations, I think, is going to help you as policymakers to determine where is the appetite, the willingness to support, to consider either current level of funding, maybe enhanced level of funding, or even a reduce, and what are going to be the consequences? Ultimately, we'll bring to you in the future a little bit more detail on what could be an aggressive and robust citizen engagement communication plan, but again, that will be here in the future. Just looking at this brief little handout, the, as I mentioned to many of you, not only with the delivering of this preliminary draft on a summary basis, tonight, just wanted to formally initiate dialogue on this work session, but what we do see is, hopefully, maybe an hour in each session, beginning on August 8th, and then hopefully, at least monthly, beyond that, we can begin to do some deep dive. Keep in mind that what we will do is get out to you a week or two in advance, any additional information that would be appropriate for these sections. So like in capital financing, debt policies, there's going to be a little bit more information we'll provide. And then beyond that, streets and sidewalks, you'll get project data sheets, and we'll continue to have more discussion about what looks like it's funded, what could be unfunded. And we think if we take each one of those in separate sessions as you go down this list, then by the end, hopefully, we begin to get to a point of which, with some of the preliminary policy decisions you are going to make, how can we structure a balanced five-year CIP plan that would be ready to roll out, say, to the public? And see what they think, based on some of these discussions? So this, this particular process, we see as a very involved process with you, the city council. We want to give each director, who are involved in some of these critical systems and areas of the city's capital improvement inventory opportunities, to give limited presentations, but also to share with you what they see as some of the priorities, as well as what are maybe some of the consequences with not funding some of these unfunded capital improvements. So that's just kind of an overview. I didn't really anticipate we'd have a lot of time for discussion tonight. I was probably going to talk more so than others, so I'd like to, we can take a few minutes, and then we can kind of finish up the work session.
Okay. Reactions, comments? Time is a little tight, but comments, reactions? Alderman Sage?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, David, I have to say thank you to you and the staff for this. I know this is something that I have been very anxiously awaiting, and I know it's taken a very much a building block approach to put it all together, you know, with the master plans and then merging those together. So just starting the conversation here tonight is a major step forward for the city. It really is. And it has taken years to get to this point, and countless hours of so many of the folks back here, and so first and foremost, I want to say thank you, because this has been one of those really big rocks that I was hopeful that we'd be able to move, you know, while I was here, and lay the groundwork for this, so thanks. Just then, a quick question, and maybe it's just because I haven't had time yet to go all through this. I noticed, like for instance, in the executive summary, we have, we kind of have some enterprise funds, enterprise fund areas that are kind of mixed in with general fund areas, and so is that, I guess we would be looking to those enterprise funds to, I guess, plan for and accommodate their own, their own financial needs by way of bonding or pay-as-you-go or whatever we decide, right? I mean, this, while things are kind of all combined here and consolidated into some general numbers, we do have that mix of enterprise funds and general funds as well. So as we, as we work through that, will we, will we kind of separate those out to make sure that we're, we're understanding that these will be, you know, combined pools from a general fund or financing? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and the answer is going to be kind of a combination yes and no.
Okay.
Generally speaking, we anticipate that a future written policy for each enterprise fund, which you, the council, will adopt, will probably put the greatest burden on those fees to fund the capital and operating needs of each enterprise fund. However, it's not unusual to kind of leave some general tax revenue to be a source of help financially, as probably some of the GO bond debt that we still have probably includes some, some general infrastructure improvements.
Sure.
But yes.
Okay. Thank you, David. Okay. Anything else on this? Kevin?
Well, I'm hopeful that we can look at some of the old debt and retiring some of that, if we are going to replace that debt, and I really think we need a real thorough look at priorities here, and what are essentials, what we, and maybe it would help if we had some idea of what, you know, really is, you know, something that's going to be on our plate in the next year, and then a timeline of what you think the needs are into the future, so that we can help to... timeline of what you think the needs are into the future, so that we can help to establish where we're going to have to make those decisions, and, and what our needs are going to be first, and then, and then later on in time. I'm hoping that we can look at some of these non-essential things and put them in the proper priority. Obviously, streets and sewers are going to be very high. We've heard that across the city. So, thank you.
And I just say too, that what we didn't want to do is get too far ahead of you, the council. We're ready to help, and I think even prioritization methodology is one that we'll have future discussion. We didn't want to spend a lot of time and effort creating something that is too complicated. But yeah, we'll have those discussions, and then based on the direction you give us, we can even get, you know, more detailed on some of the prioritization with your input and guidance.
Alderman Black?
Thank you, and thank you, David, and staff. This is a lot of work that has come together, and a lot of people say we spend a lot of time doing studies and looking at things, but you got to know where you're at first before you start throwing tax dollars at it. And we want to be getting the best bang for our buck, and this is really a key way of doing that. And I'm really excited, because I think this gives us a unique opportunity to really prioritize in a way that the public can really have an active role in engaging with us. And I think, at least in my time on the council, I'd say that this really has been kind of the infrastructure council. We've devoted more resources to street resurfacing, sewers, sidewalks than previous years, than previous councils. I mean, that's undeniable fact. And as we look now kind of towards the future, because I think what I've seen and what I've heard, feedback from people, is we don't know where we're going. This kind of gives us that, that direction and that, that heading, and we can have a really robust conversation about what are our priorities, and when we determine, we don't want to fund something at a level, let's say, you know, I saw Streets was looking at $10 million a year, and we're at 4.8, how do we get to that level? And if not, you know, what do we lose for it? But for me, I think this is also, one of my takeaways from this, and I kind of want to put this in my colleagues' heads, is this is part of that fee versus tax discussion that we keep getting to, and to what extent are some of these things public goods that come through tax dollars, and to what extent do we have fees? So, you know, stormwater fees I saw in here as a conversation, and, you know, we've done some revenue enhancements here and there, and we have some more revenue coming in. Do we need to look at that as fees? Is that the fairest way for our citizens? You know, I continue to hear feedback from, from my ward, that property tax is something that should be looked at more thoroughly, because there are people in my ward whose water bill is higher than their property tax bill. And I think that's not a fair way of looking at things. So I'm hoping as we move forward through this conversation, identifying those priorities, that we can also line up funding streams that I think are fair and equitable. And I don't think we're ever going to agree on what's number one, number two priority here, but I think a good discussion that really engages with the public is, is going to be key. And to me, the first step is getting this all together, based on facts and information, and I'm really excited to be moving forward here.
Thank you. At this point, then, we are going to move expeditiously right along to Mr. Rasserson, and we have a discussion presentation by city-owned surplus property. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Your Honor. Can you bring up that first slide for me, please? The subject of city-owned property has come up a number of times over the last couple of months, and I would like to point out that the purpose of this briefing, then, is to do three things. First, to tell you all of the property that the city owns. Second, to tell you what the staff believes is property that may be excess to our needs. And then the third thing, as the memo suggests, is to recommend to you that we get preliminary approval to proceed with the disposition of such surplus properties as we identify. We aren't going to do that now, but we'll come forward with a process to do that. So the first thing I wanted to do was talk about the total property that we own. There's been a discussion both amongst the public and some council members, that maybe we have a lot of property, and that if we would just sell some of that massive amount of property we're sitting on, that would help us with some of our budget problems, such as paying for some of the capital improvement programs. And unfortunately, when we went through all of that, we found that that's really not the case. The city has very little surplus property, but we do owe it to you and to the public to let you know what that is. And it took a considerable amount of work to make sure we found out where all of those little pieces of property were, because there are some big pieces, and then there are some little pieces. What I wanted to do now was to take a look at a couple of these pieces, and what I prepared for you is what I call the A-list. You have a copy of it in your brochure there, and the, the public has access to this as well. The A-list is all the pieces of property that the city owns. It turns out that there's 302 of them. I'm not going to go through them all, obviously, right now, but I did want to show you that we've listed all of those, and as you can see, there are some of these, you know, like when you go through some of those, item number 118, well, you know, it's Eagleview Park. Obviously, that's not excess to our needs. And as you go through the, you'll see a lot of these things. We've got item 221 is Miller Park. So all of these pieces of property, then, we have things on them. We have fire stations on them, we have water tanks on them, and so of these 302 pieces of property, there, there are not many that are excess. Then we extracted from that what I call the B-list, and that is a list of pieces of property that we presently do not have a use for. Those would be what we would call surplus properties, but they're not all things that we might necessarily want to get rid of right away, or to do something with, because some of them have some economic development potential. Tom DeBryiner and Austin Grammer are looking at all of these as to some things that we may be able to use. Some of them, however, are very small, and maybe do not have any economic development potential, and show, I'll show you some examples of those. This is a small piece of property. This is one of those eight, which is really right across the street from the water department. And that piece of property is about five feet wide and 50 feet long. Now, what, you know, unless you know somebody that raises spaghetti or something, I don't know what you can do with a piece of property like that, and probably has no, no economic development for, for anybody. So what we, what we do is some of these, we'll just have to take a look at and see if there's, if there's some disposition that we might be able to make of them. Here's another piece of property, probably seen this at the corner of Washington Street and Tawanda. That's, that's one of probably four of these that we don't have much use for. It's worth driving by and looking at. It's a nice little, little lot with some trees on it, and by the time you move back from the necessary offsets, there's not enough room to build anything there. Certainly not a house, nor a convenience store, or something like that. The third one is a little parcel there north of Mulberry Street. If you go through the alley, you look behind it, and there is a, a big fenced-in lot that is owned by somebody else, and that parcel there is, is just smaller than a little piece of backyard. And I tried to investigate as to why we, how do we have that? Where did we get that little piece there? It's behind the fence, and it's, there's trees there, and nobody could, could figure it out. We don't know how we got it, or why we own it, but it's just there. And then, here's an interesting one. This is the fifth one. This is a piece of, of parking lot that's located in the Home Sweet Home Ministry parking lot, about the size of four parked cars. Why we own that is a mystery to us, it's lost to history, but it's one of those pieces of property that I suppose if the pavement went bad, we'd be responsible for fixing it, or maybe we'd have some liability. But some of these pieces of property just don't make a whole lot of sense, and it may be easier to cede them to the adjoining property owners or something. What we're going to do, though, is we're going to, to ask then for your authority to go ahead and look at a, a process for disposing of these properties in some way, shape, or form. Probably four of them are, maybe have buildable lots, and four of them may not. And we'll come back to you with a proposal as to what we should properly do to dispose of these. And that answers the question to the public, I think, about what all of the land we have, and I also think it kind of answers the question that if we are somehow able to sell all of our excess property, it's not going to give us a lot of money to help us with our budgetary concerns. That, that then concludes my presentation, pending any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Okay.
Jim? Oh, Kevin?
Steve, some of those parcels were very, very, very small. Doesn't seem like they have much value, other than to the adjoining property owner. Do we have any, I'll ask this question for you, or Jeff, or David, but do we have any issues with giving property to a private homeowner that's adjacent to the property?
Well, yes, as a matter of fact, there are some issues in terms of, of state law about what we can do with public property, and so I'll be working with the city attorney so that we can find out how we can do that, so we'll come back to you with a proposal so we can do that all properly. You're right that some of them are very small. The one of them is, is three one-hundredths of an acre. That's about 160 square yards. So those are very small pieces of property.
I'd be curious, too, when we get a little farther down the road, if we're serious about this, I hope we're serious about marketing it or advertising it. Maybe it's hindsight, but we could look at our Coachman property and ask ourselves, what have we done to sell that? You know, I think it takes more than a sign in the yard to, to get it sold, and...
Stay tuned on that one, by the way.
Pardon me?
Stay tuned on Coachman.
Okay, okay. But if we're going to sell it, let's get serious, and let's sell it. They might not get what we hope, but let's move on.
Well, absolutely, and I'll add that on three of these that are buildable pieces of property, what's happened, we've gotten those because they were houses that had fallen apart, and so we had to get those and demolish the, the building, and we're left with a piece of property, so it's a, it's a buildable lot, but sometimes we've used CDBG funds to demolish the property and that sort of thing. So we've ended up with pieces of, of property, and, and maybe we could sell it for building, or maybe we could accumulate those in kind of a property accumulation to do another economic development plan. So some of these things we'll, we'll work through, and some of them, as you say, may just be better to go to the adjacent property owner. There's only six of them, so it's not very, very detailed. We can go back and, it's not very extensive, so we can go back and do, do a detailed study on each of those, and bring that back to you, along with the legal requirements for disposing of public property.
Alderman Lauer?
I'd just like to be a little bit more positive about this. I think that there are some things that we can put back into production. We have to think about it long-term, as long as somebody else owns it, they're going to be paying property tax on it. And so, there's a revenue stream there. I realize that some of these are just tiny little parcels, but I think that there are some out there that we haven't been using effectively, and we could be. And so, I'd like to look at what we can do, rather than what we can't. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
What about community gardens? Is that an option? Oh, sure, that, that could be done on some of these lots. Not probably the, the parking lot of Home Sweet Home Ministry, but some of these other building lots where we've taken a building down, sure, we could look at that as well. That's a good suggestion. And I also like to ask, answer Mr. Lauer's question. On these, were you thinking about, did you want us to go back and look at again at some of the 296 pieces of property that we were talking about, or these?
I'm just wondering if there is anything more that we can do. I am aware of some properties, I don't want to get into it publicly, but I've actually been approached by long-term folks that would like to invest, and have kind of been stonewalled. And so, again, I would like to maybe have a word with you.
Sure.
Look at some of the possibilities.
Yes, we'd really like to look at some of these others, because the staff looked at the 302, and that's a staff look, but if there are some of those that may have some other potential, we'd be delighted to look at those and be in conversation with some investors who might look at some of these that might have some potential.
Okay. Nothing else? Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. Thanks for the time and effort on this.
Thank you.
Critical issue, yeah. Thank you. At this point, we went from being a little behind schedule to ahead of schedule. Came in under budget, Steve. At this point, is there a motion to adjourn the city council work session?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Howman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, and we'll see you in about 17 minutes. Thank you.